Malone?
Here.
Sulva?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Lehman?
Here.
Barron?
Here.
Lohman?
Here.
Peiper?
Here.
Ferenbach?
Here.
Anderson? Barazza? And Alderman Barazza didn't let us know that she'd probably be late tonight. All right, and second item is anybody coming up to use the mic tonight? Make sure you adjust it at the podium so that we can hear you talk. Item three is approval of minutes for September 9th, 2025. Anybody got any corrections, changes, anything? Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. And items, or items have been removed, editor changed? We do need to add an executive session for the purchase and sale of electric power.
It's on there.
Weird. Not on the printed one. I'm going off the printed one right now, so.
Yep.
Okay, well then we don't have to change the agenda if it's on there electronically. Yes, it is. As a worker's compensation. Okay, thank you. All right, then we'll move on to item five, which is consent agenda. Alderman Barron?
Your honor, the consent agenda reads as follow. Approval cow executive session minutes July 29th, 2025. Collective bargaining personnel. Approval cow executive session minutes August 26th, 2025. Collective bargaining. Resolution 2025-113-R. Authorize 2026 contract price increase for Drundle and Jensen Law Group. Resolution 2025-117-R. Task order 37 with GZA for proposed limited surface investigation supplement remediation services. Resolution 2025-116-R. A contract with Alpine Demolition Service for pre-demolition abatement. Partial building demolition. Underground tank removal and soil remediation. Resolution 2025-115-R. Subdivision variation for 1222 Beckman Lane for front porch. Your honor, I move we accept the consent agenda as read. Second.
Right, motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. All right, then we'll go on to the regular agenda. Item 6.1 is ordinance 2025-047, amending Title II of the municipal code. Alderman Barron?
Yep, thank you. So this ordinance has two purposes. First, it responds to the request from the Environmental Commission to add student members. This change would allow up to three high school students to serve as full voting members. The goal is to encourage young residents, develop future community leaders, and ensure youth voices are included in environmental decision-making. Second, it addresses a gap in our municipal code. Over the years, the council has made several amendments to both the Environmental Commission and Active Transportation Advisory Commission. These updates were not formally consolidated, which has led to confusion. This ordinance codifies all of those past actions into one clear unified section for better transparency and governance. There's no budget or policy impact. Really, the main benefit is civil engagement and clarity on how these commissions operate. If approved, the Environmental Commission will nominate students each school year. The mayor will review these nominations and the council will make final appointment. Student members will then serve with full voting rights, and the code will be updated accordingly. And staff does recommend the approval.
Anybody have any questions? Any comments?
The only thing I'll say is the one that was the con in there that requires ongoing effort. I think it's great that we have to have that as, you know, part of the plan for the Environmental Commission. I don't see that as a con.
Alderman Lancy?
Is there an age limit to the students, or are we?
High school student.
High school student.
Yeah, high school student. I mean, I remember what I was like when I was a high school student. It'd be nice to have some sort of age limit there. Whether it be 16 plus or something. Is it really just high school?
It was the recommendation from the Environmental Commission that high school aged.
How many people are on the commission total?
I believe it's four.
It's more than.
But I think there's more than that.
And this would make it seven?
It's supposed to be seven.
Yeah, then I'm. Yeah.
Well, I'll say I often attend the Environmental Commission meetings, and they've had a sort of trial high school liaison program for the last year and a half or so. I'd say it's gone very well so far. Most of the students tend to be junior and senior level because that's when they're most likely to be involved. I would argue that if a student is wanting to come to an evening meeting about, you know, city policy, I think, you know, we should be very welcome to that. So far, the program, I think, has been fairly successful. We've actually gotten a lot of positive buzz from the high school students about being able to be involved in city policy. And I honestly would love to see it expanded to other commissions and roles even here. So I appreciate, yeah, for the younger students maybe having, being ready for being in that role. I also think it's a great experience. So I think high school is a good demarcator, in my opinion.
I said the con, I didn't like it there because I think this is something that we should do. And, you know, we want to review the other ones as they come up. We should probably talk about that and then decide how we want to handle it.
To be fair about it, I mean, if we could get a 14-year-old on planning commission, I think that could potentially be a problem, right? So ideally, although I will vote for it, it'd be nice to have a demarcation on age, just to hedge bets. But more importantly, I feel this is something that could be expanded to other commissions as well, especially around things like the historical commission, what have you. Just my thoughts on it.
And that's why I said we can discuss it because there could be advisory on something like that that would actually, you know, would be something that would affect the entire city. I mean, I know the Environmental Commission does recommend things, but the other ones that have, you know, processes to go through for building improvements, I don't know if that would be, you know, the greatest thing to do that.
They might have full voting rights perhaps in that case, where the Environmental Commission is really more just advisory. So, yeah, I'd agree with that.
Okay.
I make a motion. We accept the.
Recommend.
Recommend to council the ordinance 2025-47. Sorry, I don't have my glasses on.
Second.
Motion by Barron, second by Malone. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, motion carries. Then we'll go to item 6.2. Ordinance 2025-049. Certificate of appropriateness for building demolition at 23 North Water Street. Alderman Beck?
This is to approve the demolition of the Quonset hut that is in the middle of that block behind Batavia United Methodist Church. Batavia United Methodist Church is the one requesting it. They're going to sod it over for now until it can be someday used for an additional parking lot, which is the proper spot for a parking lot in the middle of the lot or little, middle of the block where nobody knows it's there. I had to look up and remind myself where this building was myself. I don't think that it will make a significant difference to our downtown to not see it there. I know it's of no use to them in its current state. So, and the Historic Preservation Commission did review this and saw no issue with its removal. Does anyone have any questions?
Say the same thing, I kind of forgot it was there.
Did I miss anything, Zach? Oh, go ahead, Leah. This may have been in the memo, I may have missed it. Is it public parking or strictly for their private use? For their private use, okay.
And just to emphasize, it's part of their long-term plans. They currently, again, in their short-term plan is to demo the building, restore it with grass for the area that the building was located. And then as funds and planning projects allow on their campus, they will make those improvements at that time. And then one thing just to emphasize, on behalf of the church, they have indicated that the age of the building, being from the 1940s, has kind of met its life expectancy. The Quonset hut is, you know, metal fabrication. It's very limited in use. And since the last tenant has left, they have not filled it, and the church no longer has any use for it and does not wish to spend more funds to keep that building, you know, occupiable at this point.
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance 2025-49, certificate of appropriateness for building demolition at 23 North Water Street.
Second.
Motion by Beck, second. By Lancy. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Both, the last two can go on consent for Monday night. Next is 6.3. Resolution 2025-114R. Authorizing a five-year contract for the purchase of Axon Enterprise Incorporated body worn cameras, in-car cameras, and the associated digital evidence management systems. Alderman Malley?
I'll take that one. So it's come time to renew for body cameras and in-car cameras and digital evidence management system. They've prepared a memo with three different bids on there. I will say, Chief, very thorough. It was a very interesting read, I would say. There's significant difference in prices in there. Some good justification for that. Let you want to, if you want to talk about it at all?
Yeah, part of the difference in prices, after we settled on a vendor, we kind of refined the quote with them to include some additional AI features that were not included in some of the other quotes. So that is part of the reason for the higher price for the Axon cameras, which we are requesting. Just to give you some information, some of the AI features that. So these cameras are a lot more than just cameras anymore. It does a lot more than just record the officer's interaction with the public. It does that, but then there are also, there's a whole digital evidence ecosystem that is part of this network. And that includes AI features such as auto transcribe, which is something that we can get an instant transcription in multiple different languages. It's a searchable transcript. Officers will be able to, while checking their body worn camera footage, they'll be able to review that transcript, find key moments, be able to use quotes and things like that. And police reports should really improve efficiency in their report writing, as well as accuracy in making sure that they're finding those key moments and things that they need to document thoroughly. Another one is live translate through their AI assistant, which is a really neat feature we're excited about. That'll provide over 50 different languages that the camera can just translate for you. So when you're out in the field, you can just request that your camera start translating in whatever one of those languages is necessary in order to facilitate communication. We do have a translation tool now that we use, but it requires officers to go to their squad car, get a phone. Then they're looking down on their phone, which jeopardizes officer safety. Now you're able to do it while continuing to maintain eye contact with the subject that you're dealing with and do so in a more efficient manner. It also has like simple lookup tools, things like that, that you could use asking the camera for information related to like street names for certain drugs and things like that, and it'll provide you with those answers and information. And then another big time saver that we're excited about is the redaction tools and the AI assisted redaction. Right now, it takes us about two hours of employee time for every one hour of body worn camera footage that we need to redact in order to release body worn camera footage subject to FOIAs. And this can reduce redaction time and things like that by up to 80%, which would be a significant savings. Sometimes we get requests for 15, 20 hours of body worn camera footage. That's an employee's entire week spent doing just body worn camera footage redaction.
And I was very impressed with the capabilities that, that was like.
It'd come a long way, yeah. From where we started five years ago with the cameras that we have now to what's available in the marketplace now. Axon is really the leader in the industry. They're kind of the gold standard in terms of body worn camera equipment. They kind of spearheaded a lot of these innovations that we're seeing in the marketplace now, widely used throughout King County. Another big advantage is it's also the platform used by the King County State's Attorney's Office, who we have to share evidence with regularly. So we'll be able to do so a lot more efficiently and faster with that app.
Also with Tricom Central Dispatch, I read in there, there's certain things that.
Yeah, the list goes on of additional features. So they'll be able to actually monitor where our officers are using their rapid SOS GPS locator. So they'll be able to see exactly where our officers are. They can do that with our squad cars now, but they can't do it and track individual officers. This will obviously create an additional officer safety benefit when officers are out of their squad cars doing foot patrols or, you know, God forbid, in a foot pursuit or something. They'll be able to see and give responding officers location and direction to how to find that officer who may be in distress.
Hang on a second, let me finish here. The, one thing I didn't see was budget. How does this lie with the budget?
So what you'll see is that our annual expenses for GTAC will be dropping off. This is the last year of significant GTAC payments that we need to make. There's a small payment at the start of 2026. That payment will be made just to get us through that like last quarter of 2026 with our GTAC cameras that we currently have. And then we'll start paying. They allow you to make five equal payments, no penalty or interest or anything associated with that. So for the entire contract, we'd make five equal payments of somewhere in the ballpark of $152,000 a year, which we'll start putting into our annual budget requests moving forward, starting next year.
So in this, in the coming years, is it with the budget?
It's going to be, yeah. Right now, there's equipment lead times, so we're not going to take possession of any of this equipment until early 2026, which will coincide with the end of our current contract.
Gotcha, okay. Okay, I'll open it up to questions now.
Jim?
Yeah, no, you know, this is my bag as far as what to deal with. The technology is exceptionally moving forward very quickly. Probably more people are really anticipating. So everything he's talking about is totally, totally valid. My only question would be, I'm assuming officer sign-off is required at some point that they've actually looked at this and they reviewed it. Is that correct?
So if you're referring to the transcript itself?
Yeah.
If they're using the transcript for like those purposes, like if we're using that, printing out a full transcript, yeah, they would have to review it and sign off to make sure that it is a true and accurate reflection of the transcript. One of the features we didn't talk about that we are not requesting at this time, it's an additional expense, obviously, but Axon does have technology too, actually. It's called Draft One. It will draft a report for an officer based on that officer's interaction. Not something that we're requesting right now. I think there's, you know, the technology still has room to grow. Those also, every report that is drafted by Draft One has a thing at the bottom that the officer has to review the entire report and then, you know, state that he did review the report and that it is a true and accurate reflection.
Right, and then the next thing that's happening is incorporation with civilian networks, with the wearables. We'll probably see that hit our desk in two to three years.
Questions?
Yeah, that was the one question I had, Tony, was about the, the price. Do you know what we're paying a year currently? Because then we do the same, similar type thing with the five-year plan.
Peggy would tell me because it's GAZB 96, we're paying like a different amount every year. So I think the total contract for GTAC, and we got in at a very low discounted price, was somewhere in the $120,000 range. So costs have significantly increased since then. And then obviously, we're getting additional features and access to things that we don't have currently. But yeah, it is a big increase in price from where we were when we entered body worn cameras.
120 a year?
No.
Total?
Total.
Oh.
Yeah, it's in that range. Don't quote me on that, but it's somewhere.
Five years?
That was a five-year contract, correct.
I think some of that explanation is.
Those, we got to get to the cloud. In order to get cloud, we got to use infrastructure. And then once they have your stuff, then they can charge you delightfully when you get it out.
And when we did the body worn camera contract too, excuse me.
No, no.
When we did the body worn camera contract, that did not include squad car videos. We bought squad car videos a year or two down the road. That was another $185,000. So when you combine it all, it gets, it's a little bit closer. But now seeking to move everything to the Axon platform, just going to be far more efficient and user-friendly to have it all in one place.
I hate to say this, but we're actually getting a deal. So thank you for beating them up a little bit, but I mean, I've seen crazier pricing than this. These guys do own the market. They are the best, no question. But I think because it's a flip out, maybe, maybe they're helping us out a little bit, getting their competitor out. We'll just want to watch them after the five years and, you know, make sure they don't take advantage of us.
Absolutely.
So I may just point, oh, go ahead. You just pointed out his body cam is on right now because I see the green light right there. So we're all good.
So that means it's buffering.
Yeah.
So we got to have two contracts that we need. Combined in this one. But then, as you also mentioned, the amount of staff time that will be saved with some of the capabilities is fairly significant.
Correct, I believe it'll be a significant savings in staff time.
Okay, and you mentioned some other local departments and our state attorney and stuff are using this system. Have you talked to them, like have they found it, you know, worthwhile? Like, you know, sometimes you'll read things in the sheet of information they give you, but then how useful it actually is in real time. Like, I'm just curious, like what the feedback has been on that.
Absolutely, so Joliet is one of the only agencies I know of using the auto translate. They love it. We did go and see a demo of it, and they spoke very highly of the auto translate feature. I know Elgin has been using a full suite of AI features, including Draft One. So they are actually having AI write their officer's police reports. I can tell you that they are a fan of it as well. Again, I don't think that was the right fit for our department at this time, but using some of those other efficiency features like the transcription service, I think will still be a big time saver for us and really help our officers with their documentation.
Yeah, I would just add on top of it. I mean, you're being conservative. I think it's a total game changer, right, for the officers? I mean, this will be dramatic time savings for them, I would think.
Yes, with our current vendor, we've had some inefficiencies and some wasted time and some frustrations, so it's, it's going to be a good change for us, certainly.
I would imagine in recruiting officers too, that'd be a question they would ask of what, when the technology is out there and other departments have it, you know, what do we have? And I would say that all of our partners with Tricom Central Dispatch are using Axon.
I believe just about every one of them is on Axon at this point. They may not all have the same features turned on, but at least being on that platform and having the option to turn those features on down the road is a huge advantage.
Yeah, this seems like a really robust, great program. And a couple of things that I'm highlighting here is that it, we have some sort of automatic activation in high-stress situations, right, drawing your weapons and things like that. It's real like almost Star Trek level stuff. From a public, we're talking a lot about workload side of things. It sounds like it's really going to provide your officers a lot of time to do more important work. From a public safety standpoint, is this going to kind of take us to another step in terms of accountability, accurate reporting, making sure our officers are, you know, responding in the best way they possibly can?
So, you know, I would say we're already doing that. We're, yeah, we are certainly responding to calls for service. You know, from a transparency perspective, we respond to FOIAs. We give people, you know, the evidence and documentation that they need. I just think this will improve efficiency exponentially, where we'll be able to do those things faster, we'll be able to do more with less at this point. So looking forward to that, especially I think our civilian personnel, our records staff are going to be extremely excited about some of the AI tools that come with the redaction.
Just one of the things that Chief had previously mentioned that would be attributable to improvement in safety is that translation feature, so that our officers don't have to be looking down at their phone, but can still be monitoring everything that's going on around them while translation is happening in real time.
Amazing technology.
Before, we were just impressed with the fact that if one officer came up, it would turn the other one on when they walked out of their car. If they're at a site where they're already filming, I think these things. What I read of the 200 pages that was there, it is amazing what they can do. Crazier than that. And then just, and then just searching them on Google, it's unbelievable how many times that that, you know, either saves somebody or helps somebody or, you know, is it just there to protect everybody?
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I recommend we send for positive approval, resolution 25-114R, authorizing a five-year contract for the purchase of Axon Enterprise body worn cameras, in-car cameras, and the associated digital evidence management systems as presented.
Second.
Quick color roll. Does anybody online want to say anything? I don't see any hands. I just want to give you an opportunity if you have any questions or comments.
No, this is Chris. I agree with a lot of the comments. I think this is a great step forward, and I'm totally going to vote yes.
Malley?
Aye.
Malone?
Aye.
Sulva?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Peiper?
Aye.
Ferenbach?
Aye.
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
I'll go with a positive recommendation to council. I think we leave that on the regular agenda and talk about it, since it is such a great leap forward.
Thank you.
Nice job, Chief.
All right, we'll move on then to resolution 2025-119R. Resolution authorizing an agreement with TKB Associates for document scanning services not to exceed $220,000. Alderman Barron?
Thank you. So staff is requesting approval for a contract with TKB Associates, our current laser fiche provider, to scan and digitize records so they can easily be searchable and protected long-term. The city has decades of paper records across multiple departments, including permits, zoning files, property records, and development agreements. This takes up entire rooms, slows staff, and limits public access. The project will cost no more than $220,000. We've budgeted $200,000 in fiscal year 2025 and expect to stay within that with the extra cushion for contingencies. There are some strategic outcomes that have been identified for this. Efficiency and transparency. This will allow for faster, more accurate response to public and developer inquiries through digital access. It'll modernize some of our services by adopting modern technology for operational improvement. Will have risk mitigation, protects vital historical and current records from damage and loss, ensures compliance with retention policies. And space utilization will free up the government center office space, now filled with paper files to be more effective. There are a little bit, couple of downsides, the upfront cost, and then staff's time to prepare the files, and some short-term disruption while scanning. However, staff does recommend that we move forward with this resolution. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Alderman Lancy? Alder Person Lancy?
Call me Alder. Are we, so did I hear correctly that this, whatever goes into laser fiche is not searchable using current large language models out there? Because it's not networked, it's not on the internet? Is that what I understand?
It is searchable.
Oh, it is searchable? Okay.
And in fact, it's got a very powerful search engine associated with it, and I find that.
Wait a minute, is it searchable via current AI tools?
Oh. Oh.
I can take that. So a good amount of these documents are, are, so they were not made available to the public. Things like resolutions, ordinances, agreements, et cetera, those would be searchable.
So my question is, is, and I'm not sure how I understand. So I'm just going to say Laserfish. Are we aware of any, any AI tools that they might be implementing into? You know, I'm not saying all of our stuff should go on the internet. I'm just saying, are they working towards that? Do we know anything?
Yeah, they've, they've already launched a number of AI tools, but part of the reason why we're looking to scan this, and I can get into a little bit about some of the ways we like Laserfish and how it's been helpful. It contains a lot of metadata. So most of the cost you're seeing is not the scanning. It's all the indexing to put in some of the data that then forms the basis of what we're going to be able to use a large language model on. So for example, right now, this plan that we have before you right now is for all of our community development files. That's house plans. So we've got about 10,800 households. All of those are going to get scanned in, plus our commercial developments and all of those businesses as well. And so that then carries with it addresses, the type of, the type of plat it is, the date it was approved, which building inspector would have inspected something. It'll have all that data and those are things that we can then use to make business decisions. So we can go back and be like, we're starting to see some issues with roofs in the town. Which contractor was on this project? Well, let's start going back. What other projects has this contractor worked on? And it's all thought of as, as we bring all of this into digitization, it's going to form the basis of our AI knowledge base. It's something that we're thinking about as a city is with your large language model, what's the data it's pulling from? Right now, there's no, it can't search our building records. It can't search our plans. It can't search any of that because it's all on paper right now. So by scanning it in, getting that metadata in, that forms the basis of a knowledge base.
Totally understand. I just wanted to make sure that company was going down that path. And all of a sudden, we don't put out, because, you know, rewind the clock 10 years ago. Yeah, get everything scanned in, electronic, right? Whatever, didn't matter. We had it on a flash drive or whatever. Now we want it searchable and we, you know, AI is changing things like that.
Yeah, Laserfish is widely used in local governments and as a major document management platform. Every time I'm in there, there's new features being rolled out. It's a, it's a company that we are confident in long term.
Awesome. As long as you guys are happy with it and they're going in that direction, that's-
Yeah, they come extremely highly recommended.
I figured there was a good answer.
We have a really good partner with TKB as well. They help us out a ton on some stuff, too.
Where do they fit in? Is this, is that like a rep or?
Exactly, yeah.
Okay.
I got three. One, are we going to dispose of the documents or store them offsite somewhere?
Good question. I don't.
It'll be according to our retention policy that we have. So we want to destroy certain documents that we are no longer obligated to retain. However, there are other documents that because of their nature, like the plans-
Plans need to be.
Those actually legally need to be stored onsite. So it'll be kind of a balancing act, several factors. And then, you know, also just with regard to our space needs, those documents that can legally be stored offsite, that may make more sense to us due to our space needs.
Question number two. These are going to be digitally stored and this might be part of Laserfish. How are they backed up? Do we have, because-
Yeah, Laserfish is a software, it's a service. So it's all hosted on their systems and whatnot. So we don't have anything, well, I should say, we do have a small, and this is for police department side, because of some of the requirements for police department documentation, we do have a small on-premise Laserfish server that runs our police department's records. Everything else is in the cloud that's backed up regularly and it's stored by Laserfish.
Okay. And then third question, what are you hoping to do with the new space while we opened up?
We have some offices where five people are sharing space and other where only two people are sharing space, but they have needs to be engaging in separate meetings within the same office that has two people in it and it just isn't working. So we're hoping to free up the space for employee workspace.
I would say the amount of space these documents take up, both between what we have on the first floor, but also third floor. If you put all of them together, it'd probably be about this side of the room. So you think about how much space costs nowadays to build out and to do. You know, we know we're doing a space needs analysis and we know we have some, some limitations with five people in an office. Not having to build out that extra space by using existing space that's really just storing paper is a, is a good investment in our mind as well.
A couple of comments. So first off, Batavia does have a document archive that's available online. Some of the old meeting notes, whatever. I do apply large language models to it all the time to kind of figure out what the history was and all that good stuff. And secondly, we do have a genuine gap in records. You're going to laugh. I have a septic system at my home. No one knows where it came from. And I had to call the county, I had to call the city. I finally got a scrap of paper somewhere. Took about a year to get it. So this is a real need and anything we can do to automate it and make it easier, I think people would appreciate it. And I will say, the, the meeting, the meeting minute archive we have has been proven to be unusually useful over the past three months. So we will see benefits from doing this.
And I do also want to touch on how this will help us going forward. One of the things we've done as part of this project is build out a ton of templates in Laserfish. That makes it a lot easier for our community development staff as their, if someone does bring in a paper application or is submitting building plans, we can scan it in right there, get it stored in Laserfish and not have to necessarily worry about some of the paper documents. And so then everything's getting stored digitally in the exact right space. So we'll have for every given address, there's a file. You go in there, is it a plant? Is it a permit? Isn't it an inspection? Is it a correspondence? And that just makes our job a lot easier when we're trying to look through all this documentation as opposed to, you know, right now, it's, it's all paper. It's, and we will also, I will say that some of our building plans are very, very, very old and, I mean, quite literally in some cases disintegrating as we, as we do this. So this has been a project that I know many staff have been trying to do over many, many years. It's not often the highest priority, but it's something that we do want to get around to in that. Yeah.
Any more questions? Anybody online?
I would just like to commend Max for his leadership of this program for our organization. What you said last, it really has been something that the organization has been wanting to tackle for all of the years that I've been here. And so thank you for, you know, the digitization of documents is perhaps, doesn't seem like the most exciting project that one could engage in here in the city of Batavia, but it was very necessary and I really appreciate your work.
All righty, thank you all.
All right, if there's no other comments, I motion, we recommend to council a positive recommendation for resolution 2025-119-R, authorizing an agreement with TKB Associates for document scanning services not to exceed $220,000.
Second. Okay, the record reflected Alderman Brazza has joined us. And we have a motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then we will move on to item 6.5, which is a discussion on the TIF one rebate to Park District for the Riverwalk.
Happy to. I'm going to pass it along to Laura.
Sure. Since the community completed the project of building the Riverwalk and in partnership between the Park District and the city, we have on an annual basis transferred $10,000 from TIF one funds to the Park District in order to cover the cost of the utilities that are used by the fountain and the lighting that is on the Riverwalk. So the question is, now that TIF one is coming to an end as of the end of this year, how do we want to fund that in the future? Do you want to fund that in the future? Because now the incremental tax base is now being returned to the other taxing bodies. So it's just weighing those things. And I don't necessarily expect a, you know, we don't have to come to a conclusion tonight, but I just wanted to get some feedback. Alderman Lancy?
I think we should have the Park District then to talk about it.
Okay. That sounds good. I can invite them in to meet with us and have a discussion.
That's gonna be my suggestion. So the 10,000 we were paying for them, was that coming out of that? Was coming from the TIF?
Yes.
Being generated from that. But then they're going to get the, they're going to be collecting it now, right? As the taxing body.
Right, because now that the TIF ended-
Exactly.
Then it gets apportioned to all of the different taxing bodies.
I see Chris has his hand up. Let me put it to Chris.
Chris?
Go ahead.
Yes, well, it would seem like they're certainly getting money back now. I'm curious, I don't know if there's a breakdown that we know. How much money are they getting now that the TIF's dissolved? Knowing that they, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I wish I had that number at my fingers. Have that on a slide when-
It's probably more than $10,000 is what I'm guessing, right? You know, so I would, I would second Alderman Lancy's suggestion because it seems like there's several topics that can be ripe for discussion.
I hope I'm quoting the right email here, but I'm, the email I'm looking at says $71,000 is going back to the Park District. Yeah, almost 72,000 in additional funds now that the TIF has been removed. If I'm reading this email correctly, again, I just pulled it up, which again, kind of, I think speaks, you know, we were giving them 10,000, now they're getting 70,000. I feel like they can pick up that tab. But I do think a discussion is still maybe worth having, right? The more we can synergize, the better.
Let me politely tell them that we're going to give them that gift.
So I've got direction. I'll reach out to the Park District and invite them to a future meeting.
Sounds good. And we'll move on to item 6.6, which is a discussion on the 2026 bag fee programming. Who's got? Max does, okay.
And just real quick, did everybody see that we got from the Batavia Environmental Commission sent out an email this afternoon?
And we have two members.
Here, mine won't open. Will anybody else's open? Mine says error. Try again later. Download.
Oh.
Just me? Okay.
I went through that, cleaned out my, I'm waiting to see if mine loads. It does.
Mine loaded, yeah.
You want to read it? Part of it is, I think sometimes when you haven't, right, okay, you got it on your phone? Yeah. I had issues with that a couple of weeks ago.
So as a little bit of background, we're projecting around 180 to 185,000 dollars in bag fee revenues that we would be expecting in 2026. Obviously, we're putting together city budgets right now. So having some guidance for you on how you would like to spend these funds in 2026 just helps us prepare our budget. As you know, we have used this funding this year to support Parkway Tree expansion. That program was very well received and significantly reduced costs for homeowners to put in Parkway Trees. We also allocated a significant amount of funding for the green program. Within that program, we accepted 25 individuals, but I think we had over 160 applicants. So there is significant demand for that program. Audits have started. I think the first person got their audit back just last week. So that program is moving full steam ahead and Craig's been a really good partner to work with. We did also secure an additional $20,000 from Kane County to support the green program in 2026. So those are some funds going there. Obviously, up for just the, whatever kind of discussion you want to have about how to use the rest of the funds. But those are some of the programs that we've used it for this year. We looked at wanting to do some naturalized basins with that, but the, I think we allocated 35,000 for that. That doesn't get you that far in some circumstances. And so really just opening it up to have a conversation about how you want to use the funds in 2026 so we can adequately budget for that.
How many, how much did we have for the 2025 budget? Was it 200,000?
Roughly.
So we've actually gone down?
We, we, it stayed roughly stable. It, yeah, I would say we're doing some evaluations, but from what we've seen, it was kind of always in the 180 to 195-ish range. We budgeted 2,000. I think it came in slightly under.
And then we're getting about 20,000 from Kane County.
That is my, that, my understanding is they're allocating $20,000 for the 2026 green program, should that move forward.
Are there any restrictions on those funds of what they said that we can and cannot use that for?
We're working on a intergovernmental agreement with them for that. But my understanding of where we're at right now is that basically it's just straight up adding people to the program. Those are what those funds would be for.
So just help me remember, we're all, in 2025, those were the only two programs we are running?
Most of the funding went towards Parkway Trees and towards the green program. We did use funding for an education campaign, purchasing bags. And those were additional costs as well that were funded with the bag fee.
I personally think it would be great. We have some momentum. They were popular, both of these programs, to just continue into the next year with it. It would protect staff time, so we're not investing more into staff time. And we already have momentum. They both seem to be well received by the community. So I feel like another year would give us a good idea of, you know, how to move forward in the future. But that's just kind of where I'm at.
Alderman Beck?
What did we, so the 35K that was not used for the naturalized basins, will that just roll over into next year's budget?
If so, yes.
And then it says here to subsidize the Parkway Tree program in Alex's notes, but really it was an expansion, right? It didn't, it was a growth of that program? It did not cut into that?
I think it was both is how we wound up doing it. There was a level of cost reduction. So the cost per tree went down on the resident side. But then we were also able to expand the number of trees planted. So it was sort of twofold. And that was something that homeowners appreciated was because typically, I think it's in the range of, you know, 200 plus dollars. I think we were down to almost, I think, 50 to 60 dollars per tree. And so those are things that obviously will last a generation and have, you know, beautify our areas and whatnot, for sure.
So I would agree that I would love to see both of those two programs continue and the green program expand with the King County funding. I am in support of using funds, you know, for naturalized basins. I think that's a great use for it. But I also understand that 35,000 a year isn't going to cut it. So if that's something we just bank every year and do a project in four years, I'm fine with that. But I do really like the suggestion that they make here about the urban forestry management program. The Tree Commission is a commission we never hear from. We've heard from all the other commissions and I would love that to be a stronger presence in our town and a more visible. And I think there's a lot of potential there to see that program expand. And I think there's a lot that could be done for the health of our urban canopy. So that would be the one that I would consider adding to the suite if we were going to add.
So just to, just to clarify, the recommendation is for naturalized basins to, for example, we were looking at doing the Randall and McKee Basin out in front of Raising Canes and that whole area. Not only is it in rough shape, but it's also kind of a very visible, publicly viewable area. The cost to do so are, I think we looked at probably over 300,000. So if your intention is to put money away each year, we can certainly do that. It just may take several years to kind of get up to a point of doing so, to be able to do, do it right. And we can keep you posted on kind of where things are at with that.
So I've used the Parkway program twice. It's a beautiful program. My neighbor's going to use that as well. Their young couple moved into a new house. They had a, quite frankly, a whole naked front yard and backyard and they realized, I pointed out to them, you can do the Parkway program. You get like five trees planted for under 1,200 dollars. Very appreciative, absolutely great program, totally endorsing it. The question really is, can we use these funds towards unexpected costs that are related to environmental type issues, right? I'm thinking of the Clark Island abatement of some weed programs. Is it possible to use these funds just for things park or environment related that pop up that we just don't see? Or is this, does it have to be entirely allocated upfront?
It is, it is whatever you choose to do with it.
Just a thought, I mean, we have programs that are popular, they'll always be in flight, but at the same time, we have these costs that just kind of pop up out of the blue, kind of related to the whole ecosystem of issues.
So I think we chose to allocate it all because-
So I think we chose to allocate it all because I think initially, when the bag fee, or what the public commonly called the bag tax, came to be, we weren't as transparent as probably we could have been as, as a council, as a city. Really, because I don't think we, we had all those ducks in a row yet, we weren't sure what we wanted to do with it. The main drive behind this was environmentally around plastic bags, less single-use bags was the goal. I would... I think I just heard you say that single-use bags has not really dropped?
Revenue has stayed the same.
So I think that's one in the same, and I, I, I will give it another year, but I'm, I'm still of the firm opinion that if we wanna do these other things that we wanna do, we need to go find the money elsewhere. We are hurting ourselves constantly with this, I hear it from my immediate community all the time. There are people that absolutely shop elsewhere because of this, I don't care if it's 10 cents or not, it's perception, and we need to really think hard on that. I don't disagree with the programs and some of the things we wanna do, I think we need to just take a, a hard look in the mirror and see where we can, where else we can find that, or other programs we can drive forward with some better messaging. But again, the main goal of this was to drop single-use bags. If we're not dropping single-use bags, we are now taking money from the population that we were not taking before and doing what we see fit with it. For, for what reason? So, just leave it at that.
Alderman long?
Yeah, uh, so, um, whether, um, I, I respectfully disagree on, on the intent, I think we should keep the, the bag, uh, fee. However, if, um, if we go that way, or if the state goes the other way and decides to ban single-use bags across the state, which has been floated in the past. I don't love the idea of sort of long-term cost being tied to this, and that leads me to say that, uh, I think I agree, I like the Parkway program and I like the green program as using those funds, let's sort of get our town, um, get a bunch of cool trees, make it pretty. Trees are great for the environment and our health, I think in the letter, they highlighted, um, some of the advantages for having trees. And I think the green program is really a value add to our citizens as well. Maybe folks who even don't value trees, we all should, but those who don't, I think, um, getting an energy audit is something that pretty much everyone should do, whether you're eco-minded or not. An energy audit is good for your home, good for your, um, your environment, your pocketbook and everything. So I really love the idea of expanding the green program, really as aggressively and largely as we can, because I really think that helps folks and that really is a good value add for our citizens.
So to that, if I may, to that point, um, some direction from council is, obviously, right now, we funded the green program at 95,000 roughly. We have roughly, you know, 185 budgeted for 2026. Would you, would you like us to substantially keep the Parkway Tree program subs, like, as it is? And seek to just grow the green program to kind of fill in those extra costs, still acknowledging that we will put 35,000 toward naturalization of basins? Does that make sense?
Yeah, if you're looking at me, um, I'm just me, but yes, that would be, that would be my preference, um, as an individual councilman.
Dustin?
Uh, in regard to the use, how effective the fee is at bag reduction, I would argue that the purpose of the fee is really economic, it's providing an incentive not to use the bags. Because the fee is a set amount and is still that same amount, I think the impact is already felt. If we remove the fee now, I think you'll see bag usage skyrocket back where it is. It's, it's one of those sort of, you know, supply-demand curve situations. It's because the fee, the fee is 10 cents, that's enough to dissuade some folks from using bags, a fair number, from my understanding, talking to people at the grocery stores and from our admittedly somewhat imperfect statistics that we're able to collect ahead of time. But as soon as you remove that fee, people go back to using bags again, just like if you remove the fee on any other desirable service. Like, if you, it's the same thing of having a discount on, like, ice cream, you're gonna see more people use ice cream. You remove the bag fee, you'll see people use more bags then, because there's no longer an immediate disincentive to do so. So, this, the equilibrium we're at right now is the one reached by the current fee, and from what we can tell, it is doing a certain, a notable amount, amount in reducing bags. So if we remove it, we're just gonna go right back where we were. As for the other economic impacts, I think that is a reasonable discussion to have. And I think it'd be worth having that, just based on what information we can draw, but obviously, that's a bit trickier to pull out.
We're trying to do some research on what that impact has been, if any. It's something I'm trying to get around to, to basically look at. You know, cert, basically, certain staff have access to sales tax data, it's not something that we can share broadly, it's, it's very closely kept to the, to the chest and, and from the Department of Revenue, the state level. But we can, we're gonna run some things in aggregate and try to get you some data as to, um, whether it has had an impact on sales tax generation. And yeah, the way we'll do that is try to look at stores that did have it versus didn't have it, is there an actual difference? And it, that's something we're working on and, um, we're gonna work on trying to provide to you.
Yep, um, as you, you all know, I've, I've supported this from, from the beginning and continue to support it, I think we've weathered a storm, I'm not hearing, uh, complaints about it. I, I don't, can't recall the last complaint I hea, I heard about it. Dustin, I appreciate that, if, you know, if we let the program go away, you know, we, we most likely would see a, a increase, uh, in the usage, so, um, I think it's been a very successful program. You know, things can always be improved, but I think, uh, you know, I, I support continuing the, the Parkway Tree program. Maybe those few, few of those people that are still, uh, not happy with it, that fee that's out there, that, maybe they get a tree and realize that it proved to be very profitable for them, so.
Yeah, um, so you're gonna laugh, um, I have heard about the bag fee program pretty much every day for the past three years, uh, so, so, um, people are aware of it, um, some people do shop other places because of it, there's no doubt. My family has adjusted to it, we have the, um, the prefab bags in our cars, so whenever we go to the stores we was pulling, I'm sure thousands of people in Batavia are doing the same thing, it is what it is. That being said, it's been alive for what, three years now? I feel as, as a, as a resident that, a couple of things. I love, I love the Parkway Tree, Tree program, I've used it several times, I think we're doing a lot of great things for the environment, I wanna keep it going, right? On, but my third point is, I would love to see this program be a value add regarding taxes. We have an unexpected expense related to the environment, why not leverage these funds? Clark Island, I mean, we didn't see it coming, it's, it's whatever, let's just go ahead and use it, at the same, at the same time, supporting these programs, right? That way, we take a little bit of the ammo away, people are saying this is just entirely green program, we're hedging our costs regarding tax increases, and by the same token, it's going towards the same intent of, of the original program, that's my take on it.
I wanted to walk back, one of the suggestions I made in light of what Kevin brought up, in terms of the, this might go away out of our control, um, so maybe not saving up for a future, let's see the immediate benefits. And I think the money would go farther if we jump down to another bullet that the BEC articulated about funding smaller projects. Our landscaping bed throughout the city and kind of using it more as a beautification, um, more of a beautification tool for smaller-scale projects rather than the large basins. The large basins need to be done, they need to be funded, they, they need, we need to foot that bill probably, um, just as a city, so, um, yeah, I'm just gonna put my, uh, support behind that one instead of the large basins.
Yeah. No, go ahead, Leah.
I have a couple of points, and I think we may have some people in the audience who wanna speak on this also. So you, just, I'm trying to remember, because it's not, I don't see it in the memo anywhere, um, we're budgeting about 200,000, right?
About 185 is what we're going with this year.
So that's close to 2 million bags in a year that are still being used. That's, I mean, that number is so shocking to me that I am very supportive of this, just because I'm trying to just, that's just for Batavia, not counting our county and beyond, so, um, that's a shocking number. Alderman Lancy and I have very different social groups, so we hear very different things, that's why we both serve on council to represent our people. I don't necessarily see this as taking money from people, because it is a choice, I haven't spent money on a bag since we started this program, pretty much, because I have bags in my car and actually find I can carry almost my full weeks of grocery in three very sturdy bags, which I find fantastic. It's, makes it much easier to empty out my car after grocery shopping. But I just, um, I just wanna like make those points that, um, that this, there is a purpose here, and it is to reduce and to bring some awareness. I understand we still have waste all over the place and plastic all over the place, and, um, we're just trying to make our mark and make effort in the tiny little ways that we can. And I don't, and I understand that some people find that frustrating and they may shop somewhere else, but, um, I hear a lot of people who are fine with it, and this is just anecdotal, but when I'm at Jewel or wherever, um, I see a lot of people bringing their reusable bags, I would say more than ever, and, or people walking off Target with their one or two items, just carrying them out instead of using a bag. So just anecdotally, I, I do feel like I see a change in behavior in Batavia, um, and I have a lot less plastic waste bags in my house, so. But I, I do wanna hear what the audience has to say in a little bit.
I just wanted to clarify, so has bag usage dropped or not since we started the program?
So...
Revenue has not dropped, correct?
Revenue has not dropped, one of the things we have been thinking and, and attracts is, you see a one-time drop and, and change in behaviors, that we have just simply no way to measure. We do not know pre-program inception what bag usage was, we did some estimates, but in, in the, to the extent that since the program has been put in, the revenues from bag fees have, has, has more or less stayed the same.
Right, so I guess my point is, is I don't understand what, where we're afraid that this giant spike in bag usage is gonna come from. We haven't made a difference in bag usage, guys, the data's there.
That's not evident.
The data is there.
It's not.
Where are we getting the money?
People that don't...
People who use bags!
People are using bags.
We are using bags in Batavia to equate to 185 to 200,000 dollars a year, over 2 million bags. Do I think that's a good thing? No, but patting ourselves on the back by charging people 10 cents a bag and creating a black eye is not the way to do it. I, I, I just, it's a pat on the back.
The trouble is, we're measuring after...
It's either not enough, or we're doing something else wrong. Like, I, I mean, to Alderman Lehman's point, Alderperson Lehman's point, it's maybe what is suggested is we raise the, we have to make an impact somehow on what we said we were gonna make an impact on. The main thing people were so upset about on this whole thing was they didn't know where the money was going.
Right.
And that was our fault. And so now, we, we dug ourselves that hole. So now, you know, if you're just out there and laying, like, well, what else are they gonna do, just to charge us some fee so that they can pay for whatever thing they're, you know, drawing up in their head and how, you know, whatever? Like, you can't fee your way to, you know, we, we have taxes, we have other ways to get money in this town, we're talking about, uh, you know, things around taxes and, and, you know, we'll have more discussion around that, but I, I, I don't understand how we don't see that. We might be making an impact in, in everyone's individual families, it's great, I would argue that that's happening across the country on a large scale. Bag usage, single-use bag usage is dropping across the country, why? People are becoming more aware, the generations are changing, this is happening organically, we don't need to force anything on our population, right? That's just my point, if I saw those bag uses drop, guys, you'd hear me shut the heck up, because what we're doing is working.
I guess the point is, we don't have a good dataset before it was implemented, the way we measure it is with it already... Yeah, all three years of it being implemented, as soon as it was, as it was implemented, it had an effect, because people, Sky, you know, came into the store, said, 10 cents, what the heck? At most, you might see a quick drop-off in the first months.
That's a very big assumption.
I think it's a very big assumption to assume that you can look at a lack of data before then and say, clearly, nothing has changed, when something did immediately change by the institution of the fee.
We technically had data, they just didn't, we weren't trusting it, right?
We weren't trusting it.
All the numbers were high?
The advantage of the bag fee is, it is a much more traceable value because it has an economic consequence, it's being actively tracked, where before, we were estimating based on survey, surveying the direct businesses, it was self-report. And from that, it suggested a fairly large use of bags, obviously, some of that had to be extrapolated, and that has decently large error bars on it, I'll fully acknowledge that. But any data we have from the fee itself is only data that exists because the fee exists, and that's gonna have an immediate impact because we're already charging money, and thus, people are going to be making economic decisions based on that as soon as it's already happened.
So how are we ever gonna know? You telling me we're just gonna have to trust you?
We're gonna have to trust what limited information we have, which suggested that there was higher, you know, amounts of bags. And all of that...
We should see some drop.
If the fee is exactly the same, there are not gonna be a significant amount of change.
Okay, let's stop for one second.
Yeah, my fault.
What I'll say is, if it was no change at all and people were fleeing to other areas, we would see a severe drop in tax receipts. I don't believe we have in our budget, over the last three years, seen a severe drop in tax receipts. So, and I don't see...
Single-use bags going down, though, that was our goal.
And I think it has gone down, we just don't have a good predata.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay.
The one piece of data that we do have is 180,000 dollars a year, at 6 cents a bag, equates to 3 million bags. Three, 3 million bags times three years is 9 million bags that Batavia did not use, and every other town around here continued to use the same amount. To me, I'm, I'm very proud of that fact, and to do away with a program that's that successful and has provided other things that, that beautifying the town and other energy-efficient, uh, measures that we're, that we've been doing, I think the program is working fantastically. I'm proud we did it, and I'll, I'll continue to support it, because that's the real data, there's 9 million bags that have not been used. And we got a problem with PFAS coming up here, and that's...
Um, you know, I'll reiterate here, um, so first off, my family has adjusted to, to the back, back tax, we have the, uh, the bags, the preformed bags in our car. If I'm honest about it, we heard a lot of complaints initially, if I look over the past three years, it's just been accepted, right? I think a lot of people are going through that, or have gone through that in Batavia. To the point made earlier, a lot of the drama was that we didn't know what to do with the money when we started this whole thing, which was our bad, right? We had a couple of things, which are just quite frankly, they're just our bad, right? A- as a homeowner, what, I appreciate the green programs, I'm definitely not fighting them, but what I would like to see, if we have this initial tax revenue coming through that wasn't initially planned for, it'd be nice to see it take care of unexpected costs. So I don't think everything needs to go for green programs, I think it's okay to say, hey, we have an issue which is related to green-type stuff, let's use this money to take care of it. I don't think we need to allocate 100% of it out of the gate, and I'll tell you why. This is, this is, this is acknowledging the reality, the reality is, we didn't know what to do with the money initially, now we got our money, and this is, it's a significant amount of money, so why not use part of this just to, to help offset costs that were unexpected, to help potentially, as a hedge towards reducing our taxes, right? That's my only take on it.
I'll be quick, first, just on the general discussion, um, whether it reduces bags or not is, um, I, I hope it does, but I view the value of it as making the people who use the bags pay the cost the bags cause, so whether it reduces them or not is sort of irrelevant to my, my calculation on that. That's the last thing I'm gonna say on that, with respect to Alderman Lancy, I don't know if we're gonna convince him tonight, right? I, I think we can, we can save the, keep it or drop it debate for another day. Okay, three very quick things, um, first, I do like the, the idea of transitioning some of it to beautification costs, especially if the beautification costs aren't huge. I'd kind of like to see some numbers on what, planting some pretty flowers and stuff and, and sort of those smaller that, like in the, um, the letter we got would look like, um, that would be an appropriate use of those funds, and so, thank you, Alderwoman Beck for bringing that up. The second point I wanna make is that I recall we had, we did sort of the outreach of funding for that, um, last time around, I, um, it'd be nice to just get an update on kind of how that went, I don't recall seeing anything, although I don't know if I was paying super close attention. So I do feel like last time around, that outreach effort was maybe ineffectual, or at least for me and my demographic, perhaps, but I'd just like to see sort of what, what came of that, what were some of the outcomes, um, from that. And then the last thing, uh, on to the idea of using it for un, uh, for seen costs, my, my fear with that is that, um, that money kind of then just disappears a little bit, right? Sort of like, save it for a rainy day, we do have rainy day funds already, um, I feel like, I, I worry that this money then just gets lost in, in a rainy day fund, so that's the hesitance I have with kind of the, the unforeseen environmental cost issue.
Alderman back?
When you bring back the data for the sales tax, the aggregate, on what it's done to Batavia, will you also kind of... to Batavia, will you also kind of context that in the grander retail is down? I've just real quick pulled up stock prices for Target, Kohl's, and Albertson's, Jewel, and over the past 3 years, they're going down too. So I don't want, if if we do see a reduction in our own, I hope that that is put into the broader context that it might not be us, it might be Target across the board is getting hit by some uh, by some low shopper volumes. And then I also wanted to just comment, just going back in time, as long as we're in the throwback machine here of this discussion, I I remember in those early discussions being very intentional and very comfortable with my decision to proceed without specifics on where we were going to use the fees, that it didn't really, we knew we were going to use them for environmental purposes. We didn't know how much was going to come in. We didn't know, we didn't know. So to put some uses behind that, when we didn't know what the budget was going to be, seemed silly and like we were getting ahead of ourselves. And in my mind, anyway, I figured it doesn't really matter what label we put on there in terms of what we're going to spend it on. The people that are going to hate it are going to then just hate those excuses or those causes too. They're, if they hate the bag fee, they're going to hate more trees. If they hate the bag tree, their bag fee, they're going to not support energy audits for our residents anyway. So we could have been as specific as we wanted to be and had perfect premonition on how much money we had to play with. I don't think it really mattered that much. I think it was going to be this way, no matter what. I still sleep fine not having given and uh, use of the funds more specifically than we did back 3 years ago.
Also, from my personal experience, it's been a lot easier to field any questions when I have something to point to, to say, this is what we're using that fee money for. You know, that would be my fear, Jim, with a, you know, a rainy day fund. You're just going to say, oh, you're just throwing that in your general fund to bolster your, you know, bottom line. That's not what that's for. And I think we made it really clear when we decided the items we were going to spend that money on. I don't have any problem with adding a little to it or changing a little bit of what we do with it. I'm hopeful that at some point, we see it go away. You know, and that's why I really, I I do not want to add any long term costs, whether it be staffing or anything, whatever money we have in there, we need to spend back within Batavia for the issues that this council or any other council decides is the right thing to spend it on. And, you know, honestly, I feel like if it was something so detrimental that, you know, it was going to hurt the businesses that are out there or hurt their bottom line, they'd be in here sitting in those seats to talk to us. So that's kind of the way I feel about it. Dustin?
Mentioning the general fund point, to respond to Kevin's concern, I would note that this money is going into a specified environmental fund, so it wouldn't be able to disappear too easily. It's, it would accrue in that fund. So I wouldn't be too worried about it being applied to other things that don't cover this, you know, desired need. So I think it'd be okay.
To clarify, I believe it does go into the general fund only to be released upon your authorization. That's just a much, much easier accounting method for Peggy.
Budgeted as the, you know, it's in the administration budget in one place, so you can hit that budget item and see, this is the way that we're spending the bag fee money.
Okay, so that is more of a concern on Kevin's side than.
Not a restricted fund like other districts have, where, you know, money that comes in for, you know, busing or money that comes in for parking lots or whatever, it's not designated that way. I know the park district and school district are very, very restricted by what money is labeled as or where it came from as to what it can be spent on.
So future council might then spend it on some other purpose. Okay, fair, good. Good to know.
Chris or Alice, do you have any comments on this before we go to the audience?
I just want to say that I am in support of the bag fee. When it first happened, I remember hearing about it and the community that I heard from was in support of it. And to agree with the majority of what I've heard tonight from those who support the fee. You know, it's changed my behaviors and I'm happy that I use less plastic. I think it's more of a mindset to remind ourselves to be more conscious of using less plastic. And also love that the city is able to provide those benefits to our residents with a green program. And I also have bought 2 Parkway trees, and I loved that I didn't have to pay the full cost. So I would love to continue that. And I agree with the Environmental Commission's ideas as well to beautify the city.
Thank you.
As for me, this is Chris. I have some of the same thoughts and concerns that Alderman Lancy has, but clearly, that's not a topic that's going to really get resolved today necessarily. I do believe that, you know, in terms of my own personal behavior, I probably have used less bags. And I can tell you, it hasn't made me go shop somewhere else just because there's a bag fee. If I need to use bags, I use them. But yeah, so even though I do share some of those same thoughts and concerns Alderman Lancy put out about whether it's really changing anything or not in the long run, I do think that if we're going to keep it in place, I like the, I like the tree program. I think that's the best use of it, you know. And I do think that even though some people were critical of it, I thought that the whole idea of having our own City of Batavia bags and buying those and handing them out because I see them getting used and we don't have any left. So they went somewhere. That's my thoughts on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody in the audience want to come up and discuss this with us? All we need is your name for the record.
My name's Andrew Deitchman. I'm here as a representative of the Environmental Commission. I just wanted to say thank you all for your support in this program. It was something that we talked long about it and I came up with this program and worked with the council to get this implemented. And we obviously think it's a good program and it provides some unique benefits to our community and to our environment. So thank you all for for your support and and for all the efforts you put in to make this program work.
So I guess too, really, I don't know that there's a whole lot that that came out of this that'll change between now and budget. And it's just a matter of, you know, do we want to stay with similar things that we've got going and and fund those, use that that money as we have since we kind of picked out exactly which ones we wanted? Or do we want to add anything? I mean, I really think especially for the the basins, that might be, you know, something that we have to fund another way with that. Lehman?
So Alder Person Beck mentioned the beautification, but then Alder Person Sulta reminded me that maybe we need more bags purchased. And is there a use for that? Do we see that there's more people who would have interest?
I would say one of the things we're looking ahead to doing next year is a lot more community engagement events. These thing go, these things go like crazy and people love them at events. I was at a farmer's market and it's a, it's not expensive. I mean, we, we may suggest allocating like $10,000 towards that of the entire total program because we're planning on doing more community engagement events, going out, whether it's bag fee specific or something. It is a good thing to give away to people. People do appreciate it. And, you know, anecdotally, whenever we've had someone complain about a bag, we're like, stop by City Hall, you can get a few bags or one or 2 of them, and you don't have to pay anymore. So that has been a way at times to kind of calm people down. I know Lori was at an event with senior citizens. They love those as well. So there is some use for bags. That's something that we, we probably will put a small amount towards in this year's budget as well, just to, because I don't think we have any left right now.
I was initially very somewhat skeptical of the getting reusable bags, but they are very popular. I think staff has done a wonderful job making a nice bag for us to use. And so I'm very much, I think, I think it makes sense. It's, it brings goodwill and I think people get excited about, actually. Thank you.
So a lot of what everybody is, you know.
I absolutely agree with. I think the trees, the Parkway trees is a great use of it. I think that the audit was pretty popular because we had people on a waitlist. So that's something to continue. I like the bag idea, but I would love to maybe get some baskets for a farmer's market that maybe we hand out. I know that might be a tough one to do if it's like, we hand one out a week in a raffle or something, put your name in it, or I don't know. But I'm always envious of the people walking around with their baskets because I'm shoving stuff in the bag.
Being down at the farmer's market and having somebody that works at the market. I told, they are very popular down there. Whenever the bags were there from the city, they went immediately and just constantly see them down there.
But I think with how popular our farmer's market is, I think that that would be, you know, have people stop by and, you know, win a basket from, you know, in addition to the bags. But, you know, maybe have a drawing once a week where somebody can win a farmer's market basket. I know that's a little bit more of a investment, but I look at our community and how popular that is and how many people it draws in.
I do think we are looking, as we're preparing the budget as well, to kind of provide some additional funding to support our expanded community engagement event. So I think we're just putting it in supplies, but you might see that line item grow to do just sort of those, as we call them, tchotchkes and whatnot, you know, little things that you can give away and just things like.
Tchotchkes? I want a basket!
Okay.
I think it would be so cool because somebody could be like, I want this basket from the City of Batavia. And they're carrying it around and that's the one thing I see people talk about all the time, like, oh, where'd you get that basket from? Like, it makes an impact.
So super quick, in, to be, to be fair of kind of how this thing started, where we did start out without knowing where the money was going to go. And let's be honest, the people who are dealing with this conversation more than us are the cashiers at all our stores. We need a one pager, which says, here's where your money's going by percentage, like, you know, whatever, the the Broadway tree program, you know, 32% to whatever it is, just something that they can give people a link to, maybe print on the receipt or something. So we're taking that burden off of making people who are not here try to explain where their money's going.
We made those available. We, we put those together when we first, that was part of like, with the education. Basically, we put together some materials and all stores have been provided those, whether they choose to distribute or put them up or otherwise.
Is that information actually by percentage? Like, I'm thinking about property taxes, right? I see exactly like this, like 43% is going to schools, 20% is going to the city, something like that?
We, we chose, here's the programs or funding. And then there was a link to the city website, which had a lot more details to it. So that, that was the material we put together for businesses and whatnot.
Based on the conversation I'm hearing, I apologize for dragging this on, I think we needed something like a bumper sticker slit to people's forehead that says, boom, here's where this money's going. Like, we're done. So.
I appreciate about that, but those that hate that bag fee, they are not persuaded. They like, doesn't change their mind and go, oh, now I'm on board with it.
Thinking about the kids. And I had teenage daughters whose coworkers worked as cashiers as Jewel at Walmart, whatever, and they got those questions and they're sitting there going, oh. But, you know, if they could have something which says, hey, 40% is going to this, 30% is going, it's going to, at least it gets it off their shoulders and 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 they're free.
I have seen that out at Menards. They, and this is probably 2 years ago, they had, you know, a link to the city website that was on a piece of paper at the end of the the dividers next to the registers. And maybe that's something that would be simple. But I also think you don't want to put any more burden on anybody in the public that's working.
Yeah.
Because we're never, we're never going to get everybody. Because I guarantee you, they wouldn't put it at every register. And when you look at the amount of stuff that's out there.
At the register.
Yeah, it's going to be overwhelming. Your honor?
Yeah, I just want to share that I think this thing has had a very positive impact from the education it's provided to Batavians about why we are concerned about these plastic bags and what they can do and not do and the problems that they create. I've talked the last year or several times now with number of our, our garbage truck drivers that are in town. And as you know, we have 2 different, most people have 2 different cans, one for your recyclables and one for your garbage. And the garbage truck drivers are telling me, it's a notable thing, the number of houses now that, like, if you get a newspaper delivered to your house in the morning, it's always wrapped up in a small plastic bag. And many people save those bags and then put them all in the recycling for, to be recycled, as does other bags. And they say that they, they've seen a notable increase in the amount of plastic bags that are now going into the recycling, recycling situation in Batavia. So I think if nothing else, it's been a great education and most people in town, from the kids in school to the old folks in the senior citizen communities, all recognize what we're trying to do here and the problems it does create. And I, I think the, the bags going in the wrong place are kind of, that amount of situation has been greatly reduced because we've had this campaign going. And the money thing is, it's, in my view, it's not that much, but maybe we use it for some environmental program. But this has been a very good campaign the last couple of years to educate the community about why we think we should be charging you for those bags.
Okay, so does staff have direction? Do we feel like we want to stay with what's there and, you know, Ed Mc, did we have a line item for bags this year?
Yes.
And I think we keep that to, you know, the, the money is static or close to that.
So, yeah, this year, the bag fee funds were under PPS and green initiatives for 2026. They will live under administration and specifically called out as single use bag fee. So that means that basically everything underneath there, we're just trying to put it all together and it's being administered primarily by the administration department.
And then, you know, any way we can gauge that, whatever metrics you can get us or whatever numbers you can get us on sales tax and on, you know.
Definitely going to work on those numbers. And then also, as we move forward in the green program, our program administrator will be compiling those numbers so we can have aggregate energy savings and aggregate improvements across the community as well. So we'll have like, X number of kilowatt hour saved, X number of improvements made, all those sorts of things that we'll be able to provide kind of once that program wraps up. Just additional background, kind of when we, actually, never mind. We're good.
Any other questions?
Are we adding beautification? We're swapping out basins for beautification.
Thanks.
Okay. Matters from the public? Anybody from the public wants to address this tonight? Is anybody behind the podium?
Put that at the end.
Somehow.
That's unusual.
Okay, then we will move to city council updates. Project status?
Just a few things. Housie Levine continues to work on the South River Street Plan. And what they most recently did was to incorporate the feedback that they received at the outreach events that they had. For our Webster Street property, we received bids for the environmental remediation, which the bid, the low bid was approved as part of the consent agenda tonight. And we expect work to begin there in early October. Probably noticed the scaffolding around City Hall that is for roofwork that began last week and is going to continue to be ongoing for the next several weeks. And then at the wastewater treatment plant, you know, we get the, the monthly updates. We're at that point where we're transitioning from the old equipment to the new equipment. And that's going very well. Couple of events that we wanted to let you know about. One is the Batavia Police Department is going to be out for Coffee with a Cop on this Thursday, September 25th, from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM. And River will be making an appearance at that event. It's going to be held at Moca at 132 Independence Drive. That's this Thursday, 9:25 from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM. And the Fire Department has an open house coming up on this Sunday, September 28th, from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. It's going to be at our West Side Fire Station, which is located at 1400 West Main Street. There are a ton of activities that are planned for that event, from live demos to station tours, CPR lessons, free food and giveaways. There's a kids obstacle course. There's a kids' obstacle course. Sparky the Fire Dog will be making an appearance. And there's going to be a helicopter landing, which is pretty exciting. And parking is available at the Batavia High School South Lot. So plenty of parking available, always a fun time, bring the family and meet the members of our Fire Department, take some tours and learn some things about fire safety. And that's all I have unless anybody has any questions for me.
Anybody have any questions? Your honor?
Yeah, I sent everybody in the council a memo, and I don't think you got it yet, about the traffic counts. Did you all get that?
Yep. I did get it.
I asked the county to do that the other day because it's been a couple of years since they've done it. And I think we're going to try to get them to do another one, specifically on Randall Road and probably also on Kirk Road. But if you'll notice that on the run of Kane County, the heaviest traffic counts on Randall Road are in St. Charles, right by where the county fairgrounds are and the court system is, et cetera, et cetera. And they were 35,000, as I remember. And the second place was Batavia from Fabian Parkway down to Main Street, and we were at 34,000, 34,800. And those are big numbers. And I'm thinking, I think that our traffic numbers are significantly increasing for probably a variety of reasons. But I'd like to get some more updated, you know, we may want to talk about us doing one ourselves, just to get some better. But one thing I will tell you, that the number out there on Randall Road is probably a strong attraction for new businesses wanting to move in there.
I was going to let you know, after you sent that out, Andrea sent a link to the iDOT site. And I don't know if that's, she's not here tonight to answer, but I don't know if that's live or if that's when that was updated. I couldn't find a date or anything on it. But that shows you can literally pull up any road in our area and look at the traffic counts on it and where it goes. And specifically, I was looking at it for Route 31 in Millview to see the numbers there because I think that's something that, you know, next year I really want to push on to try to get that done.
If you look at the daily backups on Wilson Street, both east and west, it's there almost all day long. And, you know, I don't know, I think it's going to be something that's going to be in our face here. It is already, but I think there's going to be more and more concern about it and things that we may want to try to talk about doing with it as we move forward.
Does anybody else have any others? Trying to wait for this to set up. It shows 16,900 going across the bridge each way each day. The Fabian Parkway Bridge, for comparison, is 28,200. And then as soon as you get south of Batavia on 31, it gets to 21,500 north and south each day. And Randall Road on here shows 29,900 south of Main Street, 34,800 north of Main Street. And then you can see the splits where that traffic goes out Main Street and goes out west.
That gets somewhere, too.
Yeah. It's pretty amazing when you start looking at some of the two-lane roads that literally carry the same or similar traffic to some four, four-lane roads, so.
Maybe we didn't plan our roads correctly?
No, they're just adapting. When you're dealing through an old downtown, it's difficult to set it up. You don't want to talk to me about a bridge.
So when we have a long-term vacancy of these commercial properties on these roads, it gets a lot more exposure than we think. So we just said 16,000 cars a day on Wilson, was it? Right? Yeah, 17,000. So we have, you know, a lot of commercial properties vacant on Wilson, and they're all seeing that every day. Right? So that needs to kind of flow into how we prioritize some of these properties from a vacancy perspective, because some of these, quite frankly, are just getting way more exposure than we're acknowledging.
Another thing I will always thought with, when you drive the traffic up, people go like this when they drive through. Because they're only worried about the stoplight in front of them and are they going to get through it or not? So they never look at what the stores are alongside of them. That's a difficulty.
They will never forget when we redid the bridge in Wilson, and so people had to slow down on Wilson Street. I think it was Britta who said, quite frankly, the best thing that ever happened to stores on Wilson was people had to stop there for longer than they expected and actually look at the shops that were around that.
Okay, if there are no others, we need a motion to go into executive session for electric purchase and sale.
A motion.
And also collective bargaining.
Yes.
Who made the motion? Lancy?